Conference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be taken by roll call. Acting City Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Kalmyk.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Now time for the approval of agenda and waiver for reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull a consent calendar item?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
Um, I'd like to pull items I and J from the consent calendar for separate consideration tonight. Um, as the council knows periodically, um, staff will pull a consent calendar item on a matter that maybe either hasn't been brought to the council previously, or it's some something that you haven't discussed in quite some time. Um, and that way it gives us the opportunity to briefly summarize, uh, the item. I'd like to, um, give staff the opportunity to present both items I and J tonight and address any questions the council might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, items that wish to be pulled? Okay, here and done. Acting City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, sir. Four email comments were received and five PowerPoints were received after the posting of the agenda that were distributed to City Council and made available to the public.
All right, thank you. I'll now call for a motion and a second for items that are not pulled.
Okay, I'll move to approve the agenda with the exception of items I and J, which are pulled.
Second. Okay, thank you. Could we have, uh, a roll call vote, please, Acting City Clerk?
May Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalmyk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five out.
Thank you. It's now time for presentations and recognitions. Um, the first item is Girl Scout Troop thirty-three forty-one Silver Awards, and I'd like to first call on Addison Price and Josephine Stevenson, who will present their project first, and then the others will follow along after.
Thank you so much, Mayor Kalmyk. So my name's Elizabeth Stevenson, and I am the troop leader of Girl Scout Troop three-three four one, and I want to thank you so much for having us here this evening. Our troop has been together since kindergarten, and the girls are now starting high school this fall, and they care deeply about their community. The girls are residents and members of the Seal Beach community, and we have a history of community service as well as being part of the city of Seal Beach. So one of the girls, her past family members have been on planning commission, as well as being a, a, a great grandmother, former mayor of Seal Beach, as well as, um, Esther Cummings, member of, uh, the past planning commission. So we're so excited to be here, and the girls are going to show their Silver Award projects, which the Silver Award project is something that the girls begin with what they're passionate about. They then speak with leaders, um, and experts in that field who then help them develop a project, and then their project has to be lasting beyond what they have done over the last few years. And the, um, the Silver Award projects are not earned by all Girl Scouts, so in Orange County, there's over three thousand one hundred middle school aged Girl Scouts, and only nine percent completed Silver Awards this year. And what's even more impressive is that within our troop, all seven of our girls completed their Silver Award. So I would like to now turn it over to, uh, Josie Stevenson and Addison Price to share their award. Next slide, please, Dana.
I see, and the Orange County Foster System. Our project had began because we were concerned about foster kids' experience in the foster care system. We spoke with experts like Cheryl to learn more and define our project.
Our project was a long journey, and we'd like to share that journey with you all. We started out by calling the Orangewood Foster Home and asking them what they needed. They said toys, books, and things for the kids to do. At first, we decided to try and get them toys, but we hit many dead ends. So we came back together and started brainstorming other ideas. We came up with the idea of giving them a library. We called Cheryl, the person who we have been in contact with at Orangewood, and presented our new idea of a library. She said that sounded good, but they already have a library, so we would just be growing it. We put an announcement out on nextdoor.com and got in contact with our principal to do a collection through school. In total, we collected over three thousand books. We then sorted through all the books and got rid of the ones that were falling apart. We sorted the ones in good condition by gr- genre, age level, series, and type, and labeled the boxes the books were in. We ended up donating two thousand eight hundred sixty-two books. It took three cars to get all the books there, and the workers were ecstatic. It turns out, they didn't have their own library. They had been getting books from a local library for the foster home. With the books we gave them, they were able to have their own library. Next slide.
We've already shared our project with Girl Scout leaders at a Girl Scout leader meeting. Because of our project, foster care kids will be inspired to read and challenge themselves. Our project made a big impact on the lives of these children. The foster care workers can now give a couple books to the private homes the foster kids go to. Our project helps the foster kids in Seal Beach by providing them with plenty of books to read in their age level. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Natalie Ansumoba, and the name of my Silver Award project is Backpedaling Away From Injury. My project began because I became more concerned about injuries and how to prevent them. I spoke with experts like sports medicine doctor, Kazu Hernandez, to learn more about this and define my project. My project was to help young athletes prevent injuries and to improve their biomechanics, which is the main reason athletes get injured. So I made a video explaining the correct way to backpedal, which is an example of biomechanics. I have procrastinated this project a lot, and luckily, with this hel- with the help of my mom and Miss Elizabeth, I was able to get it done. After making the video, my next step is to send it out to the AYSO organization so they can use my video and teach the new coaches and young players. I've already shared this with my friends and family and plan to branch out to other sources. Because of my project, myself and others realize that a very basic or simple movement can have a, can create a big impact. This project will help the young athletes of Seal Beach because they will learn how to stay safe and the importance of biomechanics in sports. The lasting impact of my project is to inform younger players on how to prevent injuries so they can keep playing the sport that they love for as long as possible. Here's my video, please enjoy. Next slide, I think. Teaching discipline, teamwork, and exercise. Always occur, accidents still can happen, especially as one. How you can help to prevent injuries so you can keep playing the sport you love. I have been playing soccer for almost ten years, and as I was getting older, friends, teammates, and even myself were getting injured. I also had no knowledge of how to prevent it, so I talked to Dr. Kazu Hernandez, a sports medicine doctor, and he taught me that the main reason athletes get injured is because of biomechanics. Biomechanics is the way or function of motion. An example of biomechanics is running backwards, which is also called backpedaling, and what I will be focusing on in this video. When I used to backpedal the wrong way, I was flat-footed with straight knees and leaned backward. I learned that this is the wrong biomechanics for running backwards. The right way to backpedal is to be on your toes, bending your knees, and leaning forward. This will help you keep your balance and safely backpedal while preventing an injury.
So, so the only person still, you know, really putting this word stuff out and yelling aggressively is the former president, he's just put out a twelve page statement and goes through all of this again and again, uh, you know, look, e- even, even putting in some-
Some examples of when you needed backpedal. So, remember, three key things. Stay on your toes, have bent knees, and lean forward. I hope this helps you learn the correct way to backpedal so you can avoid getting an injury in the future. Don't forget to play hard and have fun.
Hello, our names are Alyssa Endelman.
And Sophia Mason.
Next slide, please.
Our project began because we wanted to help families who were adopting receive the information they needed to pro- they needed to provide a safer and healthier home for their dog. We wanted families to be confident when having their new pet, so we designed a flyer to give them good advice that's easily able to be accessed.
We spoke with experts like Christine Ramirez to learn about the flyers SPC LA, our, SPC LA already gives out, and how we can create our own and improve it with adding our information with theirs.
Our project was a simple one-page flyer that families can keep around and easily access when information is needed.
In addition to that, we also posted on Nextdoor, asking for animal supplies for donation. From there, we were able to donate an assortment of items, for instance blankets, food, and toys, making them into little bags for the animals.
Our project helps the dogs and families of Seal Beach. We have shared this project with our neighbors, neighborhoods, our school, and the organization of SPC LA. We sent out alerts on Nextdoor to our neighborhoods for supplies, and our school also contributed donations for us. Because of our lasting and helpful project, our flyer was posted on the SPC LA Facebook account. This will help people to know how to properly and effectively take care of their animals.
The lasting impact of our project is families are able to easily access a flyer and to not only better their lives, but also their dogs.
Our project helps the dogs and their families of Seal Beach by providing helpful information and tips so everything can be suc- successful in their life.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yara Saade, and my Silver Award project is titled Now COVID, Next What? A guidebook explaining how to come back after the everlasting effect COVID made on children's lives. When sixth grade started, I thought I would have a normal three years of middle school, but boy was I wrong. When we went online, our lives had changed, and so many people were unprepared. Later on in that year, I had played tennis with a girl, one of my friends. She was super lively, happy, and free spirited, but when I saw her almost after a year after COVID, she had changed. She was sadder, quieter, and just not her same self. It was this, then that I picked up the phone and called Mrs. Elizabeth. I knew that as a Girl Scout, I could help. I spoke with my school's counselor, Mrs. Olmstead, on resources, on how, and how I could help. And I later decided to write a guidebook explaining how to be prepared in the future for any unprecedented things that come our way. Next slide, please. My project was to inspire younger girls that life will change, sometimes for the good and sometimes for the not so good. And no matter the issue, we must learn to thrive in any environment or change. I've been sharing this project with younger troops lately, and I'm going to be sharing it with the LADP, Los Almeros Volunteer Program. My project will help the youth in Seal Beach by educating them about being prepared for the hurdles that may come along in life. I'm so happy that I'm a Girl Scout, and that I'm able to take a small step in changing the world. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Phoebe Grimstra, and this is my Silver Word project called Expressing Emotion Through Art. My project began because I wanted to show kids they could help themselves by expressing their feelings through art, especially during COVID nineteen. After speaking with a local elementary school art teacher, she recognized that my experience could help her students. She asked me to make a video that showed my journey, and that also showed anyone can make art with a pencil and piece of paper. My video is being used within her school district, and it will be presented this fall to Girl Scouts in Seal Beach and Los Almeros, which means local girls in our community will see how art can help them with their emotions. The lasting impact of my project is to show kids that if they ever feel stressed, sad, or anxious, they can always turn to art as an outlet, and now I will share my video. Please enjoy.
My name is Phoebe. I'm eighth grade, and I'm a Girl Scout. A Girl Scout is someone who always tries to help others, encourage leadership, and help make friends and the world a better place. I have been a Girl Scout since I was very young, and I've been so lucky to meet so many amazing friends along the way and get so many amazing patches. What you might see is my Silver Word project I've been working on for quite a while, is about how art has helped my life for the better and how it can help yours too. Thank you so much for watching, and I hope you enjoy.
I would say I'm a very artistic person. I work through my troublesome thoughts and hardships with art. It's like a coping mechanism for me. Makes me feel happy if I'm having a rough day. I can turn to art whenever I'm feeling low, doing myself feel better. It's not always about being objectively pleasing to see. It can just be drawing some soft or hard lines on a page. It can just be stacking leaves outside or moving shapes in sand. I say, it is what keeps me calm during the day. Even if I'm not upset, I still to just grab some paper and a pencil and just sketch away. I have always felt art is like a universal language of sorts. No matter who you are or where you were from, you can always communicate with art. It doesn't matter what language you speak, you can always look at a drawing and feel some emotion. You can be very strong, you can feel nothing at all, it's all still a feeling. I have two examples to show you today. As you can imagine, I've made a lot of drawings down my life, some good, some bad, but there've just been many I liked very much. This drawing right here is one I just did for fun. This is a character drawing I did for one of my favorite video games. I like how her eyes came out, her hair, the shading, the anatomy. I love this drawing very much, but if somehow this drawing got lost or torn or ripped, I know that even though it may hurt for a little, I can always recreate this drawing. It shouldn't bring me down if a drawing gets lost. If anything, it should inspire me to make a new one. It will hurt, yes, but it shouldn't stop you from doing what you love. The second example is a drawing I did a while ago in art therapy. The direction was to make a mask. On the outside, it's what you see you as, and on the inside, it's what you see yourself as. Honestly, I don't really like this drawing. It didn't really resonate with me as something that I liked. I don't like how the colors came out. I don't like how it looks, I don't like how it feels, I don't like the texture, I don't like how it makes me feel, and that's okay. It doesn't mean it wasn't fun to create. I like using the different paints on the mask. I like using the brushstrokes and how the brushstrokes make you feel. Even if the end product isn't how I wanted it to come out, that's okay. It was the process in which I created it, which was very fun. Also, to make art, you do not need fancy, expensive art supplies. Most of the drawings I do and I cherish and keep are done with a simple pencil and piece of paper. You don't need to draw with the finest Prismat colored pencils to make wonderful art. All you need is your imagination, creativity, and anything you can draw or make art with, and of course, your emotions. Altogether, what I want you to remember today is, all you need to create art you like is yourself. You don't need anything fancy, you don't even need the picture you make to be good. You need to like your picture to enjoy drawing or creating it. All you need is to focus on how you feel when you make it. All in all, what I want to say is, art is art, and art is beauty that you've created with your own hands and the bold as canvas. Go pick up a pencil and create on paper what you feel in your heart. Thank you so much for watching.
Thank you so much for honoring us and listening to our Girl Scout Silver Award project.
Okay, thank you very much, ladies. Our, uh, as a side note, I would just note that the Run Seal Beach recognition of winners uh, will be continued to the next in-person City Council meeting. So now we'll move on to the introduction of new employees, uh, who are David Green, Executive Assistant to the Community Development Department, Cynthia Solaris, Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police, James Dowdell, Police Officer, and Philip V. Brock, Police Officer. And we'll have Lauren Barish, uh, fill us in on our new employees.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Jill. It's my pleasure to introduce four new employees this evening. Next slide, please. First, we will begin with the Community Development Department. We recently hired David Green as the Executive Assistant to the Community Development Director, Alexa Smiddle, and with that, I will ask Alexa to kick us off.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening, Mayor and Council. David Green comes to us most recently from the Orange County Department of Education, and previously, previously was with the city of Beverly Hills, where he gained extensive knowledge for this Executive Assistant role by providing administrative support to different divisions within the Public Works Department. Prior to his time in the public sector, he worked in airport security in the wake of nine eleven, and has also been a transitional housing case manager. David was born in Detroit, but moved to Northern California in grade school, and is a graduate of Holy Names University in Oakland, where he played basketball. If you have spoken to him, you won't be surprised to know he does occasional voiceover work and is active in voice acting workout groups. David enjoys watching professional and college sports in his downtime. I want to very quickly thank my, um, thank the Public Works Administrative Assistant, Elizabeth Camarena, who has been assisting the Community Development Department for the last several months, balancing duties between, between the departments. So I would say on, on my behalf, on behalf of Community Development, and probably Elizabeth in Public Works as well, we are very excited to welcome David to the Community Development Team. David, do you have any brief remarks?
Good evening, honorable City Council members. It's a pleasure to speak with all of you audibly. I hope to meet all of you in person as time progresses. Uh, thank you very much, Alexa, for the introduction, and, uh, a little teaser, my last name has an E at the end, but that, I'll let it go.
Thank you, David and Alexa, and I will say I did that, add that in, but it's okay.
That's all right.
All right, next, I would like to introduce three Police Department employees. Chief, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Lauren. So Cynthia Solaris started as my Executive Assistant earlier this year. She grew up in Ventura County and moved to Orange County in two thousand two. At that time, she began her career with the Orange County District Attorney's Office, where she's worked for over the past ten years, and was assigned to several departments such as gangs, the felony panel, DNA, and the Orange County Task Force Unit. Cynthia has earned her bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and when she's not working, she enjoys spending time with her family, exercising, and going to the beach. Cynthia, do you have any brief remarks you'd like to provide us? Maybe not. All right. Moving on, next slide, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, my, my camera was-
Oh, there she is. All right, Cynthia, go for it.
I'm sorry, thank you, Chief Goshack. Uh, first off, I just wanted to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to say a few words here. I wanted to just give a big thanks to the commandant staff at the Police Department for making me feel so welcome, and I also wanted to give a quick thank you to Megan, Lauren, and Dana. Every time I pick up the phone and, and need some help, they're there. I'm very excited to be here at the city of Seal Beach. It's one of the places I frequent with my family. Um, my oldest daughter works in Seal Beach, my husband works in Seal Beach, and now I work in Seal Beach, so, uh, we're definitely fans of the city, and thank you very much, everybody.
Great, thank you, Cynthia. All right, up next, we have our two newest police officer, Officer James Dowdell is going to be the first one I present. He's been married to his wife Stacy for eighteen years. They have two children, Nathan and Carly, ages seventeen and twelve respectively. James has been in law enforcement for twenty years, most recently with the Cypress Police Department, and has been the recipient of two Mothers Against Drunk Driving Awards, two Auto Theft Recovery Awards, and two Life Saving Awards. Further, he's worked a variety of assignments, including Emergency Vehicle Operator Course Instructor, Range Master, Less Lethal Force Instructor, Field Training Officer, Drug Recognition Expert, Accident Reconstructionist, and has been a member of the Mental Health Evaluation Team. James, do you have any brief remarks for us?
Adieu, sir. Uh, I'd like to say, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to work for Seal Beach. Not a lot of people know that, uh, when I first started my career, I was an explorer for Seal Beach, and that's come full circle. It's a truly honor, and I look forward to meeting everybody in person.
Great, thanks, James. Up next, we have Officer Philip V. Brock. Philip V. Brock was born and raised in Southern California. After high school, he moved to Reno, Nevada, where he taught snowboarding for multiple seasons. Philip moved back to Southern California and attended the Golden West College Police Academy. In the academy, Philip was hired directly from the Montebello Police Department, where he has worked for the past six years. When not dedicating his time to his career, Philip enjoys relaxing with his friends, family, and dogs. He still snowboards during the winter, and during the summer, he's out in the mountains fishing, hunting, or camping. Philip, do you have any brief remarks?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you for the introduction, sir. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the, uh, Seal Beach Police Department for this opportunity, and, uh, simply, I would like to, uh, thank the Seal Beach community, and I look forward to serving its, uh, members and visitors.
Great, thank you, Philip. With that, I'll pass it back to you, Lauren, thank you for the time.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Chief and Alexa, for introducing our new employees, and thank you to David, Cynthia, James, and Philip for joining us. I'd also like to thank my colleagues in HR, Management Analyst Jen Robles, Executive Assistant Megan, as well as our finance teammate, Finance Manager Lena Wong, and Payroll Specialist Mary Tran. As, uh, Acting City Clerk, Dana likes to say, teamwork makes the dream work, so while I'm the face of HR tonight, there's a lot that goes into it behind the scenes. And we are excited to welcome our newest employees to Seal Beach family, and we wish you all the greatest success. That concludes our presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and I also want to welcome our new folks to our great city and hope that you'll have a great career here. Next, I'll call on, uh, Marine Safety Chief Joe Bailey, who's going to talk to us about National Beach Safety Rip Current Awareness Week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, uh, happens every year. We have, uh, we're celebrating two different weeks here, actually. We've combined them into once. We have National Beach Safety Week, and, um, that's just a reminder around Memorial Day for people to, when they go to the beach, to be safe, and, and doing so, I'm going to read the ten top beach safety tips from the United States Life Saving Association. Uh, swim near a lifeguard, learn to swim, learn rip current safety, which we'll be talking about in a minute. Never swim alone. Designate a water watcher. We have hundreds of water watcher tags available down at, uh, lifeguard headquarters. If you have a pool, uh, it's, it'd be great to have one of these. If someone's wearing it, they're designated as a water watcher, they're not to be looking at their cell phone, they're not to be in deep conversation, they're to be paying attention to the kids in the pool. So we have those, if you want them, come on down, and we'd be happy to give them to you. Uh, alcohol and water don't mix. Uh, feel first the water entry, so that means, you know, in the ocean, there's, uh, troughs and holes and, and stuff like that underwater, so it's smart to check it with your feet first rather than checking it with your head. So use your feet to check the bottom. Uh, life jackets save lives, observe sign and safety flags, and beat the heat and block the sun, so wear some sunscreen to make sure you don't get overheated out at the beach. Uh, the other safety week we're talking about is, uh, Rip Current Awareness Week. So in Seal Beach, and, and most surf beaches, a, a majority of our rescues are caused because of rip currents. So rip current is where the water, where the waves push all the water up on the beach, and the water needs a place to escape, so it glows to the lowest point and runs offshore. And when people get sucked into rip currents and they get pulled- And when people get sucked into rip currents and they get pulled offshore, they try and fight the rip current, get tired, and that's when bad things can happen. So always ask a lifeguard where the rip currents are. You know, oftentimes, there's fixed rip currents, and they're moving rip currents, and a lifeguard will know where those fixed rip currents are and tell you to stay away from those. And then if you get stuck in a rip current, you need to swim to the side. So you don't want to fight the current. You want to swim to the side until you're out of the current, and then you can swim back to the beach. So those are my tips for rip current safety, and since I have the mic, I always want to remind everybody, when in Seal Beach, do the stingray shuffle. It'll, it may save you a lot of pain. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time, and I appreciate your recognition of Beach Safety Week and Rip Current Awareness Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. It's now time for public communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding the items on this city council agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take any action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to provide comment were asked to send comments via email to the Acting City Clerk or via the comment icon on the city website before 5:00 PM today. Comments provided via email by 5:00 PM today were distributed to the city council and posted on the city website for review by the public. Email comments received after that time will be posted on the city's website and forwarded to the city council after the meeting. Any documents for review should be sent to the Acting City Clerk prior to the meeting for distribution. Those members of the public wishing to call in can join the Zoom meeting from any electronic device by clicking the following link. That is going to be forward slash, forward slash, zoom.us/j/82964966057. Or they may also call in by dialing 1-669-991-28- double pound sign. Those members requesting to speak by phone or on Zoom can unmute by entering star six when called upon to speak. Once in the meeting, you will be added to the waiting room until the public comment period begins. At that time, the commenter will be allowed to join the meeting to offer their comments. Commenters will be allotted five minutes to address the council. The ability to comment will be disabled when your allotted time has expired. Acting City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments or anyone on the call that wishes to address the council?
Yes, sir. We do have several people on the call waiting to speak. We've let one person in at a time, and I have Management Analyst Jen Robles, who's going to be helping me with this process. So, Jen?
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, Mayor. We have a member of the public wishing to speak. Username Ella. Would you please state the name for your record? Your five minutes start now. Username Ella, are you on the line?
Does she need to? Hit star six?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, we're gonna have two comments because we're sisters. Um, hello, um, hi, my name is Olivia. Um, I'm eight years old. And I'm, I'm eight years old, and I have a sister named Ella. And we, and we both swim in the Seal Beach Swim Club. I would like to tell you about this past weekend. We were the best club in the OCSC meet. In our 100 freestyle relay, we came in first place. It was such a stupendous race. I came from behind for our team to win. If you raise the rent, many of our teammates, friends, and my own family will not be able to afford to swim. So please do not raise the rent. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Um, hi, my name is Ella. Um, I'm 10 years old, and I've been on the Seal Beach Swim Club since kindergarten. My sister and my brother also swim on the team with me. There are many reasons why I think you shouldn't raise the rent, but I would like to talk about two of them. The first one is the confidence the sport has given me. When I was in kindergarten, I was a nervous little kid. Now I am a confident fifth grader, and the hard work I've put in the-
My brother also swam on-
is a big part of that. The second reason is the bond and friendships that we have created. It's been a hard couple of years for all of us when COVID hit, especially on us kids. And the friendships that we have made on the team got, got us through all of that. And I know they'll last a lifetime. If you raise the rent, many of us will not be able to continue swimming, and our friendships will soon fade away. Please do not raise the rent on us so that we can keep building strong kids in our community and keep our friends for life. Thank you for listening and considering to keep the rent the same.
Thank you. May we have our next speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. We have another speaker on the line, username Bill Dewitt. Can you please rename yourself? I'm sorry, can you please state your name for the record?
Uh, sorry, yes. My name is Bill Dewitt, 3851 Heather Street. Uh, I didn't actually realize I had raised my hand, but I'm just interested in view, viewing this, uh, the Frontier Fiber Optics session tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Our next speaker is username Ricardo. Can you please state your name for the record? Username Ricardo, are you on the line today? You have five minutes. Username Ricardo?
Does he need to unmute?
Uh, no, he's not muted at the moment.
Ricardo, you don't have a phone icon. Okay, we're going to put Ricardo back in the waiting room and move on to the next person.
Next speaker, please.
We're currently admitting the next user. Username Bex Hayhoe, are you on the line tonight? Username Bex Hayhoe, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, I am on the line. Thank you.
You have five minutes, starting now.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, City Council members. Um, my apologies, I was just tuning in to listen to the meeting, not to make comment at this time, so I will hand over the remaining time that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maria is being admitted to the room. Maria, you have five minutes for public comment, starting now. It appears that Maria doesn't have a phone icon. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Hi, Maria, you have five minutes?
Thank you. Thank you for admitting me to the meeting. My name is Maria Fattal. I'm a resident of Seal Beach for over 30 years and one of the Board of Directors for Seal Beach Swim Club.
It appears that Maria doesn't have a phone icon.
Oh.
Maria, if you have your-
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for admitting me to the meeting. My name is Maria Fattal, and I've been at Seal Beach for over 30 years and one of the Board of Directors for Seal Beach Swim Club.
It appears that Maria doesn't have a phone icon.
Oh.
Maria, if you have your-
Thank you. Thank you for admitting me to the meeting. My name is Maria Fattal. Hello?
Hi, Maria.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Again, I'm a resident of the City of Seal Beach and have been part of the Seal Beach Swim Club for over 25 years. And the Seal Beach Swim Club would like the opportunity to petition the Seal Beach City Council to reduce facility fees for the Magaw Pool to keep the swim club affordable to all Seal Beach residents. The Seal Beach Swim Club has been a part of the city since 1965. The pool was built at that time, the pool that's at Magaw Elementary School. Uh, so we've been a nonprofit organization for 57 years and been a partner with the city for that amount of time. Uh, the Seal Beach Swim Club is one of the least expensive clubs in Orange County to our club's partnership with the city. Because the City of Seal Beach and them giving us reduced fees for the pool, we've been able to provide a great service for our community. The club is proud of the fact that many local families can participate, regardless of their financial situation or even the need of financial aid. As a youth nonprofit organization in the City of Seal Beach, it's a priority for the Seal Beach Swim Club to keep water safety and swimming affordable to all the youth of the City of Seal Beach. Uh, the City of, uh, the Seal Beach Swim Club does understand the city is reviewing all contracts in an effort to practice sound financial man- management. However, in this case, the swim club believes that the larger picture should be considered, specifically our historic shared partnership of providing affordable and water safety programs for the city. In 2013, the Seal Beach Swim Club signed a contract with the city. That's the first contract that we had ever signed with the city in all of our years. Um, at, prior to that time, we were paying a month-to-month fee with the city. At that point in time, the city council agreed to give the Seal Beach Swim Club reduced fees. We signed a contract at that time that had a flat fee, but with a continuing 2% annual incre- increase every year. And even during the COVID year, we paid our 2% increase. Um, we were let known on June 4th that our fees would be increased 105%. Um, and, um, which is kind of short notice to this meeting, which is now on the 13th, uh, actually, actually a week later. Um, again, we're petitioning the city council to reduce our fees from a golf pool so we can keep the swim club affordable to all residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sean Murphy, you have five minutes.
This is Doug. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Did you want to speak for public comment tonight?
No, this, um, Sean Murphy, I'm with Frontier. Sean Murphy is, is part of my team.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Our next speaker, you have five minutes. Michael Shepherd? Did you want to speak for public comment? You have five minutes. Hi, Michael Shepherd, are you there? Nicholas, you have five minutes to speak for public comment if you're interested. Nicholas, are you there?
Hello? Yes, I am.
Well, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Alright, thank you. Um, I'd like to say that, uh, yes. Okay. Um, so I'd like to make a little, make a comment on the, uh, I am. Alright, so, um, I'd like to make a comment. That, um, the, the city council is raising the price of the rent and unfortunately makes it unaffordable to the average person. So, I, I, I'm against it. I've, I've gone to Seal Beach Swimming before for a long time. And, uh, sorry.
Are you still there, speaker?
I, I am. I, I think my microphone is kind of, there's a lot of latency, so I don't think it's working right.
We're able to hear you if you want to continue.
Alright, so, um, I am. Alright, so, um, unfortunately, uh, as I said before, raising the rent prices is, I don't think is the best course of action. Um, a lot of people rely on it to go there for the summer, uh, before the summer, so that, so parents feel safe about their kids going to the beach. Many go there for junior guards. Um, personally, I went there to, um, uh, to do as a sport recreationally, and I did it competitively. Did it all through high school. I mean, I did it since fourth grade, and I just graduated high school. So it's, uh, it's very important to me. Um, and I think that it's something that everyone should have and something that should be affordable for everyone.
Does that conclude your public comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Nicholas, did you want to speak during public comment tonight?
Sorry?
Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers in the queue? Any other speakers in the queue?
Yes, Mayor, we're allowing the next speaker. Username Mordox, are you on the line tonight?
Christine, did you have a public comment for tonight? Letting in another person. Chang, did you have a public comment for tonight? Chang, are you on the line?
Yes.
You have five minutes to address the city council.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This is, is it for me to talk or?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, the reason I'm here is for my, so I'm the parent for my kids. And I think since she was four and we joined this group. And now she is fourteen. And it will be become very hardship for us to move the price. I remember earlier before, because we have a financial problem. And the team was very nice and, you know, helped us. So in this case, we would feel very bad if we have to lose the price to have my kids continue to exercise. And also increase the price and we cannot afford it. And also another reason is my husband also a venture. And he, he, you know, also would, you know, part of the reason is our income not very much. And we would, you know, appreciate, you know, help from the city to not increase the charges so we still can continue have a healthy, you know, help all my kids to exercise. Because before, no time, kids only stay at home. And now can go out to do some exercise and see them growing better attitude toward their homework. So I hope council member can consider our request not to increase or, you know, the price so we can continue to have a, you know, to take my kids to have press and set and, 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 you know, nice area outdoor and have a activity and regularly have a regular, have a press. And they can swim and they can have a glossy, healthy environment like that. And and besides, we have very good coach and they work very hard. And I think it's important, you know, we have a price. Otherwise, we don't have a price and it's very difficult for us. You know, switch here, there, and we keep looking and sometimes have no practice. Especially now coming to swimming me and the kids can see they achieve. They exercise and they got the goal. And but if it stopped then, you know, the relation she was the coach and, and the student upon each other. And because of no praise, that, that will be really difficult. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I hope you consider it. Our request, don't increase. Have us have a price and continue and set environment.
Chris from Seal Beach Swim Club. You have five minutes to address the council.
Kristen, come here. How do I get on here?
You're on.
Am I on?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mayor and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Shai Cordell, been a resident of Seal Beach for over fifty years. As a swimmer at Seal Beach Swim Club, went on to become an Olympian representing Seal Beach, along with Tim Hutton, Adam Wright. We all were a part of Shore Aquatics and Seal Beach Swim Club. With that being said, we now use the pool also right after Seal Beach Swim Club does. And we'd also like fair and equitable rent to be able to compete and be able to help the kids of our community to succeed. We offer a wonderful product for the kids. We offer water polo on the weekends, swimming during the week. And we'd also like to be a part of the excitement in Seal Beach, which is putting these kids in a safe atmosphere where they can grow as young children and become young men and women and move on to high school and use aquatics to gain those goals that they, they, they go for. Thank you very much for allowing me to be a part of this meeting. And again, I would like a fair and equitable rent for Shore Aquatics for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker will be Heidi, Seal Beach Swim Club, who is entering the room now. Heidi, you have five minutes. She's still joining. Heidi? Heidi, are you there? Heidi, you have five minutes to address the council. Are you there?
We'll move on to the next speaker. Susie, are you on the line tonight? Susie, are you on the line tonight? Username iPhone two, are you on the line tonight? Audio shows to be connecting. We'll give him a couple of seconds. We'll move on to the next speaker. Ricardo, are you on the line tonight? Ricardo, are you on the line tonight? We'll move on to the next speaker. Brandon, are you on the line tonight? Brandon, are you on the line tonight?
Anyone else on the call wishing to speak and address the council before we close the public comment?
I have a question.
Brandon, are you on the line tonight?
Can you please turn off any other devices, the TV if it's on, to avoid the feedback? And go ahead and address the council. Anyone else on the call wishing to speak and address the council before we close the public comment?
I have a question regarding public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is regarding whether...
Hi. Sorry.
If you have your TV on, can you please turn it off? Otherwise, we receive feedback from the meeting.
I have a question regarding...
If you'd like to speak, could you use the raise your hand icon and we'll call upon you before we close the public comment? Okay, Susie, go ahead, Susie. You have five minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Dahlia. And I've been a swimmer at Seal Beach for, since I was five years old. And I just wanted to say that if you could lower the or not make the price high, because some families can't afford the rent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Michael Shepherd. You have five minutes to address the council.
Since I was five years old and I just...
Michael, do you mind turning off your TVs so that there's no feedback?
I don't have a television on.
Do you have another, like, device on, maybe a phone?
I have no other devices on.
Okay, you're good, thank you. It'll be Michael Shepherd. You have five minutes to address the council.
I have a question regarding whether...
What was that? What was all that chatter?
Michael Shepherd, you may proceed.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. My question is about whether public comment will be permitted during the agenda items or if this is the time on the agenda to provide all public comment.
This is the time to address the city council on all public comment.
So my comment is regarding agenda item N. Is there a time to address that later in the meeting or is now the time to provide that comment?
Now is the time to provide that comment.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for the technical difficulty. My name is Michael Shepherd and I am here in support of agenda item N, to approve membership in the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. I am the Housing Advocacy Program Manager of United To End Homelessness, empowered by the United Way of Orange County. At United To End Homelessness, we focus our work on educating the public about homelessness, advocating for more affordable housing options, and connecting property managers with formerly unhoused tenants. At the Orange County United Way, our mission is to improve lives by delivering measurable, long-term solutions to complex issues in education, financial stability, health, and housing. In the Orange County Housing Finance Trust, we have found an organization that is uniquely aligned in these goals and encourage your vote to join the trust as part of their goal for full participation from all Orange County cities. Since forming in two thousand eighteen, the Housing Finance Trust has stewarded nearly thirty million dollars into permanent supportive housing and have one thousand two hundred and seventy-three units in their pipeline, including in San Juan Capistrano, Lake Forest, and Irvine, among others. We've seen this happen in just a short time. And with your support, this benefit can extend to more communities throughout Orange County. You will also find in your correspondence letters from Sue Parks, our CEO and President, Lawrence Armstrong, our Board President, and Bex Heho, our Executive Director. Your participation, along with the other Orange County cities, will allow the housing trust to seek the maximum potential of federal and state funding and demonstrate how all of our cities have a stake in ending homelessness for our residents. Thank you for your attention and thank you for your support of the Orange County Housing Finance Trust.
Thank you. Brandon, are you still on the line?
Yeah.
You may proceed with your public comment. You have five minutes.
Thank you. And sorry for leaving halfway through the meeting. I haven't used Zoom in a while, so I'd just like to say thank you all for listening to me. And I appreciate what you all do. I'll just keep this brief. Inflation is like eight percent, right? They just released the report. So why are we getting a hundred percent, like, you know, rent hike for the pool? Yeah, for Seal Beach. It's absolutely insane. And I know a lot of good people who might not be able to afford it there. And I just, there was like a time of, time in my life where I was actually kind of depressed and I really hated everyone. But I went to Seal Beach to, that was really my only safe space, I guess. And yeah, I had, my friends there are never toxic, not even once. So please keep it affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Panigiyoru, are you on the line? Is there anybody else wishing to speak or address the city council?
Mayor, you can close the public comment.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment and we'll move on to our city attorney report. Craig, do you have any comments?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Prior to the meeting this evening, the city council met in closed session. Prior, excuse me, prior to the start of their closed session, the city council considered and adopted findings pursuant to AB three sixty-one, government code section five four nine five three, to find that based on a number of COVID-positive cases and other exposures within the city's organization, there's a need to hold this meeting and meetings through the end of the month, at least, via technological means in order to protect the public health and safety because the council found that there's a risk to attendees by continuing to be in person. So for at least through the end of June, the city's public meetings will take place in this format. And then the council will consider the issue in July. And that's the only report. There was no other reportable action in closed session.
Thank you. We'll move to council comments. These will be general council member comments and reporting pursuant to AB twelve thirty-four. We'll start with council member Moore. Do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last Wednesday, I was at Pete's Coffee at the Shops at Rossmore with Coffee with the Cop. Thank you to the Police Department, especially Chief Goncheck and Nick Necklace for being there and organizing the event. There are a lot of Leisure World residents I was happy to sit down and talk with. And I was also enjoyed talking with a lot of the police officers. and I was also enjoyed talking with a lot of the police officers and getting to know them better. Last Saturday was the summer kickoff party at Edison Park, and thanks to Tim Kelsey, Anthony Nguyen, and the Park and Recreation Staff for organizing the event. The Lions served hot dogs and hamburgers, and it was a nice relaxing evening in the park watching a movie and meeting with neighbors in College Park West. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sistarsik.
Sorry, Mayor, thank you. In the last two weeks, I attended a Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting. I attended a Library Advisory Board meeting, two budget workshops, Police Department Honors Breakfast, a meeting with the Frontier members that will be doing the presentation tonight, the Los Alamos High School graduation ceremony, and also the beginning part of the summer kickoff movie at Edison Park, and thanks again to Anthony Nguyen, Tim Kelsey, the Lions, and Recreation Staff. And that's all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a mouthful. Let's see, Councilmember Verapapa.
Yeah, nothing to report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Masalavich.
I have nothing to report this session.
Okay, and I just have a couple of things. I also attended the Los Alamos High School graduation, which was, actually was a lot of fun. And I also attended the breakfast, recognizing the several police officers for various things that they've accomplished during the year and awards that they received. So that concludes my comments. Next, we're gonna have a...
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
I just did, I had a short report tonight before you move on to the study session, if I could, please.
Oh, yes, you're on, you're on the list here, too.
That's okay. I just wanted to provide some additional comments to the city attorney report regarding the action the council took tonight before closed session with regard to moving to remote meetings, and just wanted to thank the council for your ongoing support of every effort to continue to do all that we can to ensure the health and safety of the public and our city staff team. I also want to thank the community for your patience and support as well, because while it isn't ideal, and clearly tonight we can see why that is, for any of us to be in the position again to have to temporarily return to holding public meetings in a remote environment. We unfortunately currently have an outbreak of COVID infections in our organization and multiple others exposed in our facilities within the last week. That's even more impactful for a small organization such as Seal Beach, since we don't have the depth of staff to be able to sustain an outbreak and exposures that currently exist if we don't take immediate action to mitigate the spread of COVID, and really do everything we can to try and get ahead of it, which is what we're trying to do. And hopefully with that, we can minimize disruption to our organization over the next few weeks so that we can continue to provide uninterrupted services to our community. I think it's important to note, at this time, City Hall and the majority of our facilities remain open to the public, and we've temporarily moved all of our meetings from in-person to remote to ensure there are no large gatherings of city staff members, city officials, and members of the public. I'd also encourage the public at this time to conduct as much city business as you possibly can for the next few weeks, either via telephone for our website and/or emailing us staff members directly, or via our general email portal at askcityhall@seabeachca.gov, and would also encourage wearing a mask while conducting business indoors at City Hall and in any of our facilities. So again, council, thank you, and that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you. Sorry for overlooking you there. Okay, now we'll move to a study session, and I'll call again on City Manager Ingram for comments, and we're going to be talking about the Frontier Fiber Optic Project update.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're pleased to welcome Doug McAllister, Vice President of External Affairs with Frontier and his team to present to the council and our community and discuss an update on a Frontier Fiber Communications project that will offer a new fiber network to both College Park West and College Park East. City staff's been working closely with Doug and his team since, I think about February, to determine how best to support bringing fiber to both College Park West and College Park East, and at the same time, ensuring the integrity of our street infrastructure as well. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge Doug and his team for their partnership with us in this joint effort, their dedication to investing in this project on behalf of our community, and I especially would like to acknowledge and thank Iris Lee, our active Acting Public Works Director, and David Spitz, our Associate Engineer, for their guidance, expertise, and support over the past five months on this project in joint partnership with Doug and his team. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Doug McAllister, Vice President of External Affairs with Frontier Communications. Doug?
Thank you, Jill. I appreciate that. Am I coming across okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I really do appreciate the time that you're allowing to me to kind of go over everything Jill was talking about and bring you all up to speed on this project that we've been collaborating on. It has, it has been a genuine pleasure working with your team. They have been, I like to refer to it as finding a way to yes, and that is somewhat unique in the government world. It's really easy to say no. But in this case, it's been very unique and very much, very much a joy to do that. So my hat's off to you and your team for that. It's a good business-friendly atmosphere. I have with me for sure Sean Murphy. He is the Supervisor of Network Operations and Network Access. If I have him here, in case there's any questions you all asked me that I'm not smart enough to answer, he'll be able to fill in those engineering blanks. And I'm not sure if Jim Glesner made it or not. He's the owner of a company that we'll be talking about later on in the presentation. I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible. I get it, these meetings they get long, and at some point you need to break there. So I'll be as brief as possible, partly just for the second brevity, but also it's, I want to allow time for questions, should you have any, without taking up the balance of our evening. So let me just jump in to the presentation. I could take questions at the end, but if there's a question in the middle of everything, feel free to interrupt me. I'm very interruptible, and we can chat about that. So we go to the next slide, please. Frontier is involved right now in the biggest fiber optic build they have ever done. I believe it may well be the, at least the second biggest that's ever been done in history. It is a massive, massive undertaking, and throughout the history since Frontier purchased this wireline service from Verizon years ago, and then to now, the company culture has been such that it's been evolving. And what the new CEO and the board has decided, this quote is mine, but it pretty much summarizes the culture that I believe they're trying to institute into Frontier, and that's simply this: If we're going to do something bigger than we've ever done, then we have better business better than we've ever done. To that end, they have wanted to see to it that we change the metric for how a utility such as Frontier interacts and collaborates with local jurisdictions. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation, but I want you, I mainly bring this up now is to understand that everything you're going to hear is a result of this new collaborative culture. Next slide, please. I'm just gonna go over this briefly. We can come back to this slide should you have any questions, and perhaps Sean could help me with some of those answers if necessary. But this is generally what the build is going to look like, and this is a very, very simplistic map. You'll see near the center of the picture, the little orange spot with a C O. That is our central office. It's from this wire center that everything else will proceed. And I'm going to kind of go through what happens from this wire center as we go forward. So let's go to the next slide. There we go. There's several really cool things about what we're bringing to Seal Beach, and you can read all of these at your leisure. I want to point out, the first, the second, and the fourth one on the left, it's my left-hand column here. This fiber network is 100% fiber from our central office to a customer's home, and we mean that literally. It leaves the central office and goes all the way to the wall of the customer, and is 100% fiber. There's no coming to the, to a community and then stopping the fiber and going back to coaxial or copper or whatever else after that. This is 100% fiber. Because of this, you don't have the issues you would have with copper. The twisted pair of copper technology is 140 years old, and when it gets wet, it stops working. And then when you get, you know, you may be promised 100 meg up and down or whatever else, and you might get that, might get that up, down, but you won't get it up because it's too many people get on, and then you start losing connectivity, and you start losing bandwidth. None of that happens with fiber. We're bringing gig speeds up to 2 gigs to your city. You can only imagine what that means when it comes to capacity and speed, but you don't have the bottlenecks. You don't have the issues of a DSL complication. You don't have the issues of weather. It is a completely new technology that's putting in all over the country, and the speeds are such that it's, the capacity is beyond anything I could ever use. I'm happy with 500 up and down, and these speeds are symmetrical. So whatever the speed is one way, it's the other way as well, and it is completely secure along those lines. If you imagine the idea of a copper line being similar to, say, a hose, a garden hose in capacity, what we're bringing in this capacity would be the size of a 20-foot culvert. It's a very, it's a massive amount of capacity and speed that is coming to every home in your city. And then finally, like I said before, the high-speed internet, it's fiber optic that offers speeds up at 2 gig. I'm gonna walk through briefly the options that your folks will have at the end. But you can only imagine, when I was on council in Marietta, my big thing was economic development, and I just wanted to bring in broadband backbone. And Fios came to town, and it made all the difference and took Marietta from a veteran community to a center for biotech. It just made a huge difference. And now with, you know, even what you're dealing with right now, with having meetings online, with having folks that work from home, having this access to these speeds brings over-the-top opportunity for people, entrepreneurs or everybody else, who need and want to have that kind of security, that kind of consistency, and that kind of speed up and down. Next slide, please. This kind of illustrates how it works. You have your central office, and then fiber cable goes from that and goes to the distribution hubs. I'll show what those look like. And then that, it goes to your fiber terminal, which is, serves a certain number of homes, and then from there, it goes to the home and hooks up, and I'll show you where that hooks up here in a second. So let's move to the next slide. These are bad pictures. I'll tell you right now, but they are. But they will show you, like, here's the fiber distribution hub at the top left-hand corner. It's about three feet or so tall, maybe a little shorter. And then you have a fiber pull box that goes in through. If it's an aerial splice, you see that at the top, top right-hand picture there, and then there's a terminal up there. But regardless of where that happens, these are the pathways from the central office all the way to the side of the house. I'll show the side of the house in a second. One of the things I want to make very, very clear, when I say these are bad pictures, is because of the dirt. We're very focused, and when we go to install these boxes, first of all, we try to do them in a very unobtrusive way, and your staff has been exceptionally informative to help us find where the best places are to put these boxes, and where we needed to condense these distribution hubs and so forth, so that doesn't, it's not messing with anybody's view or their front yard or anything like that. But regardless of where we put them, we'll take pictures before we put them in. We'll put the box in, and then we remediate and make sure it looks as good or better than when we started. That's the same thing for the fiber pull box or anything else. And so we're very, very focused on the fact that, that, you know, cities such as Seal Beach are very focused on what things look like. Well, so are we, because at Frontier, what things look like, with Frontier's name on it, reflects on Frontier. And so when we're here, we want to be there for the long haul, so we want to look good for the long haul. Next slide, please. Once you get to the side of the house, you'll see that a box on the sides, and it's the optical network terminal. The picture on the right, the box is open. The picture on the left, it's closed. And I believe the terminals that we are using now are maybe smaller. I'm not sure about that. But the idea here is that this terminal, what it does is the fiber comes to this terminal, and then from there, it's converted to whatever media line, whatever they have coaxial, whatever it might be, that goes into the house. And that short distance from the box to the router in the house does not slow down the speeds. And so that's where it gets converted from fiber to whatever the customer has in their house. Next slide. One of the issues that we're really working hard to deal with and find a way to guess to good solutions for are any city, and every city I'm in, I'm in 30 cities already, and every city I'm in, they all have, you know, their street repair program. Some do them every seven years. One city found a bunch of money, so they're doing 10 years' worth of work this year. And so, but once you get those streets done, you don't want them looking bad. You want them looking nice. You put a lot of money into them, and I'm very sensitive to that, having been where you are when it comes to those streets. And so, in the past, it's been a situation where it was always a, always a problem between any, any, any utility, or, and the cities, when those streets were in there, because if we don't get in there before the streets get repaired, it's many times could be years from where we get in, and in the case of this, that would mean to be years before citizens could have access to gigabit byte speeds. We came across, not a new technology, micro trenching is a technology that has been around for a while, but the problem with it has always been that the backfill that went back into this two-inch trench was typically not real good over a period of time to seal the cut. And it also didn't look good at the end, and so you have, you know, all these cuts and everything else, and patches and such, and when you have a street that's been, that's been, you know, made to look very nice, you don't want that, nor do we. What we've come across, and I don't know whether Jim Glesner made it on the call or not, he's the owner of a company called Elephant Armor, and it's a product that is not oil-based. It's cementaceous, which means it can grind like everything else, but it is, it is created in such a way that when it goes into the trench, it adheres to, it just seals everything up. And so water does not get down in there, and it doesn't deteriorate over time, and you're able to tent it to come very, very close, if not exactly, sometimes matching, matching the street that it's going in. So if it's an older street, we'll tend to match that. If it's a, if it's a newer street, we'll tend it to match that. And one of the things that these pictures do not show, these are just pictures I had. As you can see, I need to get better at pictures overall, that the plan is, is not to do this in the road area, if possible. Predominantly, these will, these two-inch trenches will go right up against the curbing. And so it won't be a cut in the middle of the street. It'll be a cut right next to the curbing, which makes it easier to hide, and also because it will adhere, it will seal to both the concrete as well as whatever asphalt material that you've used. Over to the right on this slide, a guy by the name of Donald Reed, said he was a paving manager 10 years ago for the city of Nashville. City of Nashville started using, this is just testimonial to us, because we were out asking questions to see how much of this was real, of what we were hearing. And what he was telling us, and what he wrote down here was, is that this was eventually what it came to, is the only material that the city of Nashville will allow to go into their streets. It's the only one. And according to Jim, and he's looked at this, and he keeps track of these things. He uses this in airports and in sidewalk remediation and now streets as well. It's been over five years since they used this material, and there has been no failures whatsoever. No leaking, no cracking, no failures whatsoever in the city of Nashville. So at your leisure, you can look at this testimony yourself, and probably feel free to reach out to Mr. Reed, I'm assuming. But that is, that is a solution that we have been working on with your staff that we believe for your sensitive streets, we have a way to be able to do both things. One is to take care of those streets in the way they need to be taken care of, but number two, also provide to your residents this next-generation gigabit speed that I know they're gonna want. Next slide. Collaboration looks like this, in my view. No, not one before. There we go. We're collaborating, right? Collaboration looks like this. It's three words: expedite, educate, escalate. The expedite part has to do with the build itself and working with the staff, and in my view, Frontier earning the right to have a... The expedite part, um, has to do with the build itself and working with the staff and, and, um, and in my view, Frontier earning the right to have as many permits as possible. Uh, moving forward and then performing on what we said we will do. So that's, you know, Frontier's responsibility and collaboration is do what we'd say we will do. Um, and our, our hope to collaborate with staff is to then therefore earn, earn permits and so forth and such. And, and your staff has been literally very awesome about things like that. The second thing is educate, we're doing that right now. I'm, I'm doing this presentation because I don't want you to be surprised. I want you to be able to answer the questions when your, when your constituents ask them, um, and such. But also the process of this, our folks will watch this and, and, um, get educated about what we're doing here, um, with regard to the fiber optic build. And then escalate. And this is kind of, I referred to this earlier in the presentation and this is kind of where I come in. I am new to, I'm a new function, let's put it that way, to, uh, Frontier, uh, communications. Uh, when, when they talk about if they're going to do something bigger than they've ever done before, then therefore they better do business better than they've ever done before. And, uh, so they brought me on, um, about four or five months ago. And my sole responsibility is to work for you. And I mean that quite seriously. In fact, that was a condition of, of my, um, of my employment with Frontier was that I, they would understand that while they're paying me, I, I, in essence, would be working for the, the local jurisdictions. And that means is that for the city council, the five of you, for your city manager and many other staff that she might designate. My phone, my cell phone number is, 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 is at your disposal. If things ever get escalated, if something's not happening, that's not right. If, 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 uh, uh, somebody has a question, but they ask you the question, um, that gives, you have the access to me. You, I've, I dealt today with another city all day with the city council members and city staff who are dealing with questions because they have access to me. And so when it gets to your level, you have someone to reach out to, who has a title that can make things happen. And it's my job to see to it that, that, that you're not left in the cold and you don't have, who do you call? Well, you call Doug, that's what I'm here for. And so the escalation of that thing is alls I'm asking is that if something gets to your level, call me. That's what I'm here for. Next slide. One of the things that, oh, I gotta fix that one. Communicate E, um, one of the things that we, um, um, we wanted to get very, very good at in the process of this build. Is that we want to be, we want to communicate, um, to your residents. What you see here are a couple of examples. Um, there's a, one is a construction door hanger, these are door hangers that go on, um, on the, on the doors. We took, many times we'll take pictures of those, even for time we, we leave them on the door. They go on the door twenty-four, thirty-six, seventy-two hours ahead of time, um, in whatever the program the city would like for us to do. And that, this is another example, is a yard sign, we'll put these things out. And, uh, but we, what we're trying to do is get this citizen's attention so they know here's what's coming. And so that they'll have a number to call to have a question. And, and so forth and so on. And there's many other ways we can do this and that, and with regard to that, the best way I can say how, what those ways are is, is whatever the city asks us to do. That we will do our best to do that, um, make sure that the word gets out. So folks don't wake up in the morning and see somebody out in, 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 in front of their house doing stuff and be surprised. We don't want that. Uh, we want them to be able to, to, um, understand what's going on and so, and, and not have the confusion and, and maybe even concern when they see that happening. So that's communication, we did a lot of that and we're, we're working with staff right now to make sure that we have a program that, that they're satisfied with. Next, next slide. This is what the costs are. When, um, the folks gave me this slide, obviously it looks like a, like an ad, forgive me for that. Um, but it does show you what the options are. Uh, the five hundred up and down, uh, megabits is, is, uh, is fifty dollars a month. Um, if you're going to go to gig services, seventy-five dollars a month. And then you have the option of two gig service, um, at a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Two things about that, first of all, those speeds up are up and down, they're symmetrical. Um, it's, it's not a, uh, well, you can get five hundred, uh, down, but five hundred, you get about two hundred or a hundred and fifty up. Um, it's going to be symmetrical, so you have that, it's great capacity. Um, first of all, uh, the second of all is that those speeds, we have divorced ourselves in, well, we divorce ourselves from content. What drives the price up of these, uh, many times is all the video content. You're gonna get your channels and your special, uh, movie channels, everything else. And, um, that could be done separately by the customer, but they just want internet and they need it fast, um, and then fast speeds and lots of capacity. That's the cost of it right there and it's not, it's not a doorbuster. This is, this is gonna be, they're not gonna get this thing doubled in a year. Um, it's, this is the price. And then one other aspect about this before I go on, this is a one and done build. Meaning, once we get the fiber in the ground and everything is hooked up, uh, we never have to do that again. Right now, we're going up to two gigs and speed. The short version of that is that if we wanted to go to ten gigs, we just changed the light in the central office. It's just a change of a car. We go up to twenty gigs, it, once the market starts demanding twenty-five gigs or whatever, uh, we're able to do that with the same network that we're putting in now. And so we're not coming back in to tear your streets up or anything else in the future. Next slide. Then there we are. Um, I've, I've done a lot of talking and, and shared a lot of information and I stand by for questions, um, of, of any of you, right? And I do appreciate the time once again.
Have there any questions from council?
Um, I, I had a question. I wanted to, um, thank Mr. McAlister for, uh, meeting, uh, me, with me and Tom, uh, ahead of time. Uh, I, I wanted to ask the question, I, I know, I think you said, but I couldn't, I didn't catch it. How long Nashville streets were done with this and that they haven't had any problems?
Um, it's been at least five years.
Five years, okay.
Five years.
Okay. And I do appreciate, uh, your attention to, uh, communication with residents. Sometimes with, uh, utilities come in, they, they just come in and they do things and people, like, like you say, they get a little worried when they see people in their yard. Uh, and, and they, they get advance notice that you're going to be working in the street in front of their house and they're gonna have to move their car. Uh, but, uh, I, I also appreciate your, uh, uh, availability in case I have, I get any calls. So thank you, and thank you very much for that and that's all, thank you.
And council, councilwoman, I would, I would like to reiterate on this one is that I'm serious about that phone number.
Okay.
I really, I really am. And number two, one of the things about the micro trenching that is so advantageous is that we're, we are not in front of their house very long. When during boring, we might be doing three to eight hundred feet a day. With micro trenching, we could do three thousand plus. And so it moves through very, very quickly and that whole idea, here's the lesson, the impact on your, on your constituents. So those are two very important points.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've had just a, a quick comment and question.
Sure, John.
Thanks for the presentation, uh, and, uh, I appreciate your Star Wars response. What, what's the timeline of, uh, with, when this would happen?
Um, I'll start the answer to that question, I may bring Sean in to give us more details. Um, we're working with staff right now to get everything finalized. We need, um, we need to get, um, your approval, uh, with regard to, um, our, our solution for your sensitive streets. And, um, and such, so we can plan that part of it. But, but Sean, are, are you still on, buddy?
Yes, I am.
Sean, can you, um, providing we move forward on this, how quickly will you think it would be started on this build?
As it stands right now, once we get approval from council and the, and the mayor, we would be looking to begin in July at the absolute latest. Um, everything hinges on approval of our permits. And then we do our notifications to the community and we'll start moving forward.
Okay, Sean, you were, you got real quiet on my, on my side, but I hear you say in July?
Yes, I, I anticipate we can start in July.
Okay, thank you. Council member?
And you said that'd be about three months?
About a three month build? Is that correct, Sean, about three months?
I, from start to finish, three to four months at the longest.
Okay. Part of this council member is, um, when we, we're projecting times, is that the, the, the speed of, of micro trenching. Has the great possibility of shrinking that time. But so we're giving you, say, four months to be safe, but we believe it'll go quicker than that.
Okay, you know, I've heard from my residents that they want options, so this, this would be a, a great option for them. I'm in the IT industry, so I understand fiber and how it works and the limitations of having cable, internet. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited and, uh, I guess my question would be the city, how, how do we move forward?
But we're excited to work with, continue to work with the city, it's, um, it's been a real pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Sandra.
I have Frontier, uh, cable service right now. How is this different from that?
What you probably have, I'm, you know, I'm not aware of where you live, but what you probably have is our DSL, it's a cable, um, it's a, a copper. And, um, we're talking night and day difference. The copper is the, you know, like I said earlier, it will, um, if it rains or it gets wet, it's gonna stop working. It's a kid, doesn't handle the weather. Um, then you've got the speeds and whatever your plan has for speeds, um, you know, there's, there's the up and down. There's the speed of what's coming in versus what's, what you're uploading. And, um, it's not always the same because of copper and also because, you know, whatever plan you have. Um, it probably works great at three o'clock in the morning when nobody else is there. But when there's twenty or thirty people suddenly on, um, on the line at the same time, all your speeds slow down. That does not happen with fiber. Um, not only does the, not, does it not, it could be a hundred people on there, it won't make a difference. But is also, we're starting with, you know, minimum of five hundred up and down. So it's even that, that's, that, that package, um, which is, that's, that's uber fast as well and the capacity. And it's not going to go out, the consistency there, um, it's, it's night and day difference. And, um, I think you're gonna love it.
Can I, can I share one thing to that, please?
Sure, please go.
John, we can't hear you, buddy. Hold on for a sec. Council member?
Yeah, well, I guess, why, why is it not being offered in Leisure World? Was that, that's, uh, if Frontier's right next to there?
That is, um, a conversation I've been having quite often since, since we met. And, um, it's, it's, it's a bulk agreement with the HOA. They are now, um, they're now, I'm gonna be careful here. They are now in the process of negotiating, um, a new bulk agreement, uh, and such. And we are in discussions with them, um, and so, and we, um, we, we hope, it's, it's, we like, we would love to be there. It'd love to be there, but it's gonna be the choice of the HOA, whether or not they, they choose us or not. Um, and so that's, we're actively having that discussion as we speak. And I can probably talk to you offline about more details as well.
I'd like to talk to you offline about more details, so I'm in Leisure World.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. And, you know, started out as Verizon, they're the ones that put the fiber optic down there.
Right.
Or whatever they got. And I have never, in all the time I've had Spectrum or Frontier, had an outage problem.
Good.
Maybe once or twice it would go off for a little while and the weather never affected it. So, um, whatever they did, they did it right. And I'm, you know, I, I'm just curious at how you're making it better.
Yeah. Well, aside from the speeds, the technology and things like that, um, I, I'm, I'm suspicioning that what, we're what's called the ILEC. We're the incumbent phone provider, if you will. We've probably been there forever, you know, before that was Verizon, before that it was what, Pac Bell or whatever, um, and such. But it's, it's the, what is there, um, is what we're replacing to bring it up to fiber optic and such. So if you've, if you've had good experience with copper, um, you will, um, you're gonna love fiber optic. I'm happy to, at, at, at any time, once again, you have my phone number. I'm happy to come to Seal Beach, you know, so if you guys want to talk more about that, we can talk about that in later time. Happy to do that.
But could I ask you a question? You said that you might be negotiating with the people who are negotiating for a bulk rate in here.
Right.
Um, you guys can tie in together, you're not a, not separate?
No, we would, no, we would be, we would be the, we were, we're negotiating to be the provider for you. Um, so that, that's what we're negotiating to do.
Well, you have to have, I think, forty-six hundred of the units in this bulk.
Right.
And those of us who are not in that bulk on, on Frontier, um, still have an option of where we want to go, right?
Right. Absolutely, and that's, that is the gist of the discussion that's being had. I, I want to stay, be careful about this discussion, I'm gonna get out of line here, so Jill or city manager, city attorney, stop me if I do. Um, but, um, there, uh, that, that is the gist of what's going on and, uh, we're hoping to have those discussions. With, with the people who make the decisions, that we're, we're in the process of that now, let me just say it that way. I can't, I'm not sure how much more I can go into it in this forum.
So, um, when fiber optic comes into Leisure World, are they gonna be in the same easement as the current?
What we try to do, what we try to do when we build is that if we already have existing conduit, and I don't know the answer to that in Leisure World. But if we have already have existing conduit, we just pull it through that conduit. Um, if it's already a, a aerial, we just, we just, uh, wrap around the existing wire. Um, but regardless of how we do that, it's in the same easement. We stay within that easement.
Okay. Well, I'm curious, I hope you keep me up to, uh, speed on your negotiations.
We're doing our best, we're doing our best, it's, um, it, it will make the difference between whether we build in there or not. And, um, so we have liked it, we would like to do so, and so we're, we're, um, we're working very hard at it.
Okay. Mike, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I had a question about the, um, infrastructure portion. Can you bring up that map sheet with the green line, please?
Someone can. There you go. Ready when you are.
How does that work, the green line? Is that a new line or is that an existing line? Will you be going?
Sean, um, now Sean, mind you, your microphone is, is a little wonky, so make sure you're speaking right into it and speak up. Uh, but can you kind of explain this map to, to the council?
Okay, so the, the green lines are proposed new runs for our fiber optic cable. Those are where we have existing easements and we are, and those are where we would look to run our fiber cable through. Uh, even though like you see where it's crossing through Leisure World, that would be on a thoroughfare. That does not necessarily mean that we are able to serve the community of Leisure World. So that, that's just to kind of hopefully give some clarity to that.
So starting on the.
Supposed to place our cable.
So starting on the bottom of the page, it looks like it's, um, on Seal Beach Boulevard, up to Westminster Boulevard?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, it comes down, it looks like it comes down, but it doesn't appear to.
Sean, Sean, correct if I'm wrong, but, but folks, what I understand the, those lines to be is that those are basically the, the, um, the main lines that, and then the actual build will spread off of those lines. Um, into the communities where we are not, um, at this point, that, that we, that we fall under. Is that correct, Sean?
That is correct.
So if you see over, um, to the right of the, of the picture, where you see all the different color lines there, that community. Um, that's an example of, of, of the, um, of where we go off the main line into community.
That would be, uh, College Park East, if I'm, if I remember correctly.
So, so the green line, starting on the bottom of the page, going north. The first, the first line, the first segment, is that on Seal Beach Boulevard? Is that a new line that'll be dug into the street or is that into an existing conduit? How does that work?
John?
I would have to look into the actual work orders, but that would be for, I, I'm anticipating that to be existing conduits. Where we are not having to do new construction.
Okay.
I, I can follow up and give better detail.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious if you're digging up the street or not, basically. On Seal Beach Boulevard between, it looks about, about here and point up to, uh, Westminster Boulevard and then, you know, north of there. If it's, if that's a new line, existing line, you'll be digging in the street, is it in the median, is it in the Northbound Lane? Is it Southbound Lane? Just all those type of questions, I'm sure the permit will have that. So I'd be curious to see what type of, um, you know, any type of work that was gonna be done on that area, so. any type of work that was gonna be done on that area, so.
Sean and David, Sean and David have been working together extremely well, working out this and everything else. So Sean, if you could just get back with David and give him an update on that, so he can give his council member the answer they're looking for, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, that section around Leisure World is is a projected future build. Right now, we are currently focusing on College Park East and College Park West. That's, that that is our, that is our main focus right now. All right, thank you.
Okay, my question regarding the Old Town area where all of our utilities are coming in off of a pole. Am I to understand then that the new fiber will be added on to the existing lines that are coming to the homes?
You know, the, what we typically do is lash the copper around the exist, I mean, I'm sorry, not the copper. The lash the 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 fiber around the copper on existing aerial like that, and so the build itself as a result is is very very not impactful, is that, if that's even a word. And such, but that's, that's the, that's the typical way we build that.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, and this is not, it's more of a rhetorical question because right now we have umpteen, if there is such a number, lines of coax and God knows what, telephone, fiber, whatever else, you know, running down our streets and alleys. And it just means that we're just gonna be adding more wire and nothing is being taken down or removed.
That may be the case, however, the the footprint of the wire we're adding, you you'll hardly hardly see it. It's not very thick. So there, there, it's the the visual impact is minimal if anything. But I hear what you're saying. There is, you know, there is the aesthetic side of that. And so Sean, if you're taking notes, let's talk to David about that as well.
I I can actually, I can add to that really quick.
Okay.
When we overlash the primary fiber cable and the fiber terminal tails, you will see a very minimal impact. What I think the big stress and concern for a lot of the aerial community is the additional ops that go to the home in order to provide the service. So one thing that Frontier is doing is we are removing the old copper lines that are going to the home when we replace them with the fiber drops. So that will, that that really helps with the aesthetics when it comes to the new build going in. We will actually, as we expand and and convert a customer over to fiber, we'll actually remove the copper drop from the phone plant, not the copper cable TV plant, but from the phone plant, so it does clean it up as we go through the build.
Okay, that would be very helpful, because it's, you know, if you if you stare at it for a while, it's, you know.
I live in an aerial community, so I completely understand your concern.
Yeah, my wife, my wife looks out our our back window upstairs right into the bundle. So yes.
She can call me and I'll and I'll work to help get somebody out there to clean things up.
Oh, well, we can't, we can't talk about that publicly.
No, Sean, no, Sean, we're not gonna talk about that, buddy.
Well, thank you very much for your.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I know there was a comment about next steps and I'd like to give either or both Iris Lee and David Spitz an opportunity to make a few comments.
Sure, please, go ahead.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, for opportunity to provide a few next steps that we're gonna be working with the Frontier team on. Provided that, and it does sound like we have council support on moving forward and working with Frontier to build us FTTH at the CPW and CPE communities. We're going to be finalizing some plans with Sean Murphy and Doug's team and making sure that we have all the microtension locations, the above ground facility locations, and of course, the public outreach information. I know that Sean mentioned that we're looking at a July deployment. It is aggressive, so we will be updating council and the members of the public as soon as we get more information. But that is a quick update from our side.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had, I had one more question, one more question or clarification?
Sure, go ahead.
I I actually had a resident that that was asking me the the question about the phone lines. I'm in College Park East. We have Frontier phone lines now that are copper that have been underground for fifty plus years. And we've had lots and lots of trouble with them, so your, your, their question was, would this replace the copper? And so you're saying if they become a customer for your fiber, then their phone line would get replaced too? Or they would be VoIP or what, 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 what could they expect in College Park East?
The the fiber is going to run past their house regardless if they, if they become a customer or not. What happens is, is that the fiber runs past the house and then when a customer orders service, then we come back and do a drop, meaning we connect to the to the fiber and then get to the side of the house, usually underground or like like Sean was talking about and such, and so that copper goes away. And they'll be on the fiber network and the problems they were having with the copper over the years, they they won't have. You know, if it gets wet, it will still work.
Okay.
So, so the short is, answer is, they'll have opportunity, but it will still be their choice, what they want to do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Did we have some more comments from staff?
I believe that, I believe that are comments, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very good. We have a lot to look forward to, apparently. Okay, next is going to be the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. So now I'll call for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item I, items I and J.
Don't move.
Second?
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Berapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalnik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries, five oh.
Thank you. So now we will take up the items that have been removed from the consent calendar. Item, are we going to take them together or separately, City Manager?
Mayor, we'll take each one separately.
Okay, then do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I will call on our Marine Safety Chief Joe Bailey to present item I to you. He'll briefly summarize the staff report and be available for any questions the council might have. Chief Bailey?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Mr. Mayor of City Council, the item before you tonight is a facilities user agreement between the city and the Seal Beach Swim Club. Seal Beach Swim Club is a longtime user of the Maga pool. And in two thousand thirteen, many of the city fees were increasing, including the Maga pool fee, which hadn't been updated in years. I informed the club that the fees may be going up and a club representative asked the council to lower the rate which the camp council granted. The Seal Beach Swim Club has been paying a reduced rate of five hundred and fifty dollars a month since two thousand thirteen for six lanes Monday through Thursday. There was a two percent increase each year, and so this year they've been paying six hundred and forty-four dollars each month. If the club were to pay the full listed amount in the city's fee schedule, the cost would be one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a month. Over the last nine years, we've had other aquatic clubs use the pool, United Water Polo Club, Set Aquatics, and now Shore Aquatics, and these clubs have all paid the full amount listed in the fee schedule. We've bringing this item to council since it's been nine years. And the other item we'll be talking about is an agreement for Shore Aquatics for their facilities user agreement. So I thought it was a good time to bring this agreement back. There, we've made some changes and some things, you know, since things have changed over the last nine years, the time slot has changed for Seal Beach Swim. And so we wanted to put that in the agreement. We have taken out the two percent increase each year. And and we did this because we plan to bring these agreements back to council every three years. And and that way we can relook at it every three years. And since, and then also the second agreement with Shore Aquatics, Shore teaches both swim and water polo, and they've been using the Maga pool for the last year and a half. I'll stop there and ask if you have any questions regarding the the facility user agreement for Seal Beach Swim Club.
Any council questions? Okay, hearing none. Go ahead, Joe. Continue.
Okay, so the the second agreement, as I spoke about earlier, is with Shore Aquatics. Shore teaches both swim and water polo, and they've been using the pool over the last couple of years and paying the rate listed in the fee schedule. Once it looked like we were moving out of COVID, and now I guess we're back a little bit. We, I I did some reprogramming at the pool, so in the past, we had adult lap swim for two hours in the morning and two hours at noon and two hours at night. And so we've had such a big turnout since COVID that now we have adult laps from six AM to three PM. And so things have changed and we've locked in the hours and we're now, we're now using the pool from six in the morning until nine in the evening. So as part of that is Seal Beach, is Shore Aquatics taking a time period from five to six thirty, or actually, I'm sorry, five thirty to seven in the evening. So they're going five days a week in the evening and and they're, we're asking them to pay one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars per month because they actually use more hours than Seal Beach Swim Club does. And with that, I have one more point to make. I did a quick survey just to let the council know where we are on our fees. We have in our, in our fee schedule, it says it's fifty-five dollars an hour to rent the pool. And so the Belmont Pool in Long Beach, they charge five dollars per lane per hour. So in effect, that would, that would mean equal to us, they would be charging thirty dollars an hour, so we're, we're more than the Belmont. At the Long Beach State Pool, they charge a hundred dollars per hour, but they have a big fifty meter pool, so when you break it all down, our fee may be a little bit higher than Long Beach State's. And then the Long Beach School Districts for their pools that are real similar to Maga with six lanes. And they charge, let's see, what is it, sixty, around sixty dollars per hour? But then you also have to pay a janitor to come open and close when you're done. So they charge, the Long Beach Schools charge more than what we're charging. So we're on the high side, but definitely not over the top. We're, we're on the middle high side. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from council?
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Is the junior guard separate than the Seal Beach Swim Club?
Yeah, so I I know there, there may have been some comments earlier that may have kind of put everything together, but I I think maybe what the representative from Seal Beach Swim Club was talking about is back in, I I believe it may have been the sixties or the seventies, the city actually started the Seal Beach Swim Club. But then I think it was in the, in the late seventies, early eighties that they separated, so the club went out on their own away from the city. And they've been at the Maga pool the whole time, but so to specifically answer your question, no, the Seal Beach Junior Guard program is a completely different thing. The city provides at the pool, we provide an after school class. That's an hour class after school that runs pretty much year round. We provide a junior lifeguard preparation class. And when we do that, we knock shore out of their time slot, we take over their time slot for six weeks and teach our classes as a city, and then we do swim testing for the junior lifeguards at the pool. And so there's different groups in the pool throughout the day. Seal Beach Swim Club, the city, Shore Aquatics are three different entities.
So are there other pools used by the Seal Beach Swim Club and Shore Aquatics?
Yes, Seal Beach Swim Club, as far as I I know, uses the the base pool in Los Almeados. Shore Aquatics uses Long Beach State and also they use some of the school district pool time. And they also use the Belmont pool time. They're spread out all over the place.
And those are comparable rates, you said?
Well, like I said, the Belmont's lower than us, Long Beach State is lower than us, the Long Beach School District is higher than us.
Right, so we're kind of in the middle. And then it was stated that the city's been giving the Seal Beach Swim Club a discounted rate for all these years. Is that correct? Is that?
That's correct. In in two thousand thirteen.
Why was that?
Well, I, in two thousand thirteen, I had just been put in charge of the pool a year or two earlier and we were sorting things out, so I wanted to get the users on facility license agreement, so that way we were really clear about if they can store stuff on the pool deck, what their hours are, what the insurance requirements are, what the lifeguard requirements are. So all of these things I wanted to codify in an agreement. So I let the swim club know that, hey, we need to do this agreement. And at the time, the rate, I believe, we were changing the rate to fifty dollars an hour. And the Seal Beach Swim Club representative came to city council and asked that the city council to cut that rate. And the city council did at that time in two thousand thirteen, authorized that rate to be lowered for them for a flat monthly fee of five fifty plus a two percent escalator each year.
Okay, would you say that this is a fair market value then? And how was that determined again?
So when we, when I looked at all the fees in in two thousand thirteen, you know, we we look at our fees every, every three or four years and whether they be the pool fee or the junior lifeguard fee. So the, and and once we, we look around, we look what the market value is, we bring that to council and council either votes yes or no. So in two thousand thirteen, we were looking to move the fees up to a market rate. I did a survey between the LaSalle Base and Long Beach State, the Belmont, Huntington Beach. And we determined that a good rate was gonna be at the fifty dollar range. And the council voted that, or the council hadn't voted that yet, once we had the agreement, but it's since been changed. It went to fifty and now to fifty-five.
Okay, and then, and then when the rate, you know, if it passes and gets increases, does it go up automatically or is there like a a timeframe or cushion between, you know, today and and when the bill goes up?
So, well, the, I said, I I set the date to make it a clean transition for July first. So July first would be when the new rates would be in effect.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask, Joe, the the rates that you surveyed, are those rates that are current, meaning that they are gonna be in place for the foreseeable future? Or are these rates that would possibly also be going up this year based on, you know, fiscal policy? You know, for the city of Long Beach in case of the Belmont or the other pools that you quoted?
Well, so i- in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fifteen, when we looked at those rates, it was a different story with the Belmont Pool, right? And so their rates have actually changed and gotten lower. But when I just did this quick survey over the last week, I would say that we're, we're high to mid, to high to mid, we're mid to high. And so I don't think we'd be looking at increasing. I, I, I have no plan to bring it back to council to raise the pool rate. And in fact, since we're, we're entering these agreements, the idea is we'll go for three years and then we'll reevaluate.
I see. What, what can you tell us about the overhead at the pool in terms of repairs, supplies? You know, wages in terms of the lifeguards that are are at the pool and so forth, and how has that affected?
Well, as, as the council knows, the the pool has definitely passed its useful life. And, you know, I think it was three or actually four years ago, we had an emergency heater replacement to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars. And, and so these, these things are coming up. So the pool, and the truth is, even if it's a new pool, there's gonna be a lot of operating costs that the city's gonna have to cover. It's not gonna be, you're not gonna be able to reimburse the whole cost of running a pool. It's not going to be, you're not going to be able to reimburse the whole cost of running a pool. Um, I don't think ever. So w- with that being said, there are some definite costs that that at the pool that we have for our lifeguard staff um who I might mention haven't had a raise in five years. Um, and are just the equipment and the upkeep and and, you know, the the chemicals um that we get every month to to treat the pool water. Th- things are expensive and um they're going up. And i- it's, you know, this is one of those things that's going to help cover some of those chemical costs and the heating costs a- and all of those things.
Okay, thank you. Any other council questions?
I I had a question. I I do know pools are very expensive. My my pool service and things have gone up. Um, I I wanted to know, you may not know, but I wanted to know as far as the Seal Beach Swim Club, do you know what the the charge to a swimmer w- is now and what it would be going up to with this rate increase? Is that would there would theirs double or 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 I you may not know that, but I was just curious.
Yeah, uh council member uh Sastarsik, I I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what they currently charge now.
Okay.
And you you know, they use, they have a large program that uses, like I said, two pools.
Okay.
Usually they have their young kids in Seal Beach. A- and when I say young kids, that's, I believe they're like six to nine is is the group that uses.
Okay.
Maga pool.
Well, mostly the the lower, the elementary students. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
I would just add a few um comments to Chief Bailey's presentation, just to note that um this is why specifically it's so important that we conduct fee studies on a regular basis to look at our fees. And all of you know, um especially with respect to recreation, that we don't achieve full cost recovery and and nor should we. Um, but I think we have to keep in mind that it costs us, you know, to to operate, maintain and staff, especially a pool, uh and the programs and services that go along with that. And all of you know, um the costs for us continue to increase. Um, our overhead increases on a regular basis. And so I I think we need to keep that in mind. Um, to Councilman Vera Papa's uh comment about um the reduction that happened um by the council at that time in two thousand thirteen. And we did identify in the staff report in terms of a financial impact. I I I think it's important to note um that that's been a reduction um over nine years of approximately seventy thousand dollars, which means it was a reduction in revenues for the city. So just wanted to make those um those points. I think there it's important to note. And again, we're we're doing the best we can um to conduct those fee studies on a more regular basis in conjunction um with our budget, especially looking at fees, if not every year, every other year to to ensure that we're 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 making increases on a more regular basis in order for us to hopefully achieve um the maximum cost recovery that we can so that we can continue to provide the same level of service.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I would uh just comment that um with regard to our fee schedule, that as much as we would hope to recover the actual cost of providing a service, whether it be a document or providing a swimming pool, um we really don't ever achieve a hundred percent recovery, do we?
Not with respect to recreation programs.
Okay. Okay, um, any other comments by council? Okay, if not, then I'll call for a motion and a second to approve uh the item that was pulled, item I.
So move.
Is there a second? Then I'll second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. We'll move on to uh item J then. Is there a s- separate staff report for that?
Chief Bailey, did you have any additional comments with respect to the proposed uh facility license agreement for Shore Aquatics Club at the Maga Pool?
I don't. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have, do we have any uh council questions regarding um this pool, this uh club? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we'll uh go ahead and ask for a motion and a second. So moved?
Second.
Can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you very much. That passes five oh. Okay, um, we don't have any public hearings tonight. We do not have any unfinished or continued business. Under new business, we have item M, which is uh calling and consolidation of election for November eighth, twenty twenty-two. I'll call on our acting city clerk, Dana Engstrom, to tell us about this.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and City Manager Ingram. Pursuant to state law, general municipal elections are to be held within uh statewide elections. This item is to receive the authority needed to call for the election and consolidate with the county for the mu- the general municipal election on November eighth, twenty twenty-two for the position of Member of City Council for District One, Three and Five. District One boundaries include Old Town and the Surfside Colony. District Three boundaries include the Hill, Coves, Bridgeport, Inherent Point. And District Five boundaries include a portion of Leisure World. You have four items before you tonight for approval. The first is Ordinance sixteen ninety-six, calling and giving notice for the election. This is pursuant to our Charter Section five oh six, stating that the city council shall by ordinance order the holding of an election, by holding of all elections. Upon your approval, this ordinance will be posted and published in the paper three times. Resolution seven three oh two is asking to consolidate with the Board of Supervisors. And upon your approval, I will be forwarding this to the Orange County Board of Supervisors and the Register of Voters Office. Resolution seven three oh three regulates that each candidate for the elective office may prepare a candidate statement on a form provided by the city clerk. And the statement shall be a brief description of the candidate's education and qualifications and should be no more than two hundred words. Resu- Resolution seven three oh four, pursuant to City Charter Section five oh nine, provided that no candidate receives a majority, which is fifty plus one of the votes, there shall be a runoff election. The date of that runoff election will be January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and will be consolidated with the county. Upon your approval, Ordinance sixteen ninety-six, along with Resolutions seven three oh two through seven three oh four, will be added to the city of Seal Beach website, along with other helpful candidate resources minus the nomination papers, which will we are unable to provide until the nomination period, which is July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two through August twelfth, twenty twenty-two, during normal business hours and by appointment only. Anyone interested in learning further about the candidate process can make an appointment with me in the city clerk's office. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Dana. Any council member questions? Okay, then I'll call for a motion and a second for Ordinance sixteen ninety-six and Resolution seventy three oh two and seventy three oh three. Please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. That passes five oh. Next is item N, the Orange.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't I don't think we got, I think we missed Resolution seventy three oh four. I think the motion was only for two and three, so we made a motion in seventy three oh four.
All right, could we have, I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg, for catching that.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, then, on to item N, the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. And um this is to approve that we adopt a resolution approving membership of the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. And we'll call on Director Schmittl to give us the information on this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council again and City Manager Ingram. On May ninth, the city council heard a presentation from Adam Eliasen, who is also here with us tonight. And he's the manager of the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. I'd like to review just a couple of the salient points that were in that presentation, as well as those in the staff report. Go to the next slide. For context, I would just ask that you think back for a few years, because you may recall that before the pandemic homelessness was the topic of discussion in jurisdictions around the county, following several years of increasing cases of homelessness. There were multiple lawsuits, federal courts were involved, and of course, there were the simple observations of everyone traveling around the county, witnessing people living on the street and in encampments. You may also recall that the County of Orange had for many years a plan to end homelessness. It was called the Ten Year Plan, but it had been slow going. And thus, in the twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen years, it really became apparent um throughout the county that more drastic actions were necessary. So following a lot of work with state elected representatives, Assembly Bill four four eight was approved, which allowed the trust to form in twenty nineteen. The county dedicated five million dollars at that time to kickstart the effort. And since that time, twenty-three cities have become members of the trust, along with the county. Next slide. These jurisdictions have come together with the goal of financing affordable housing. A county study from twenty eighteen identified a funding gap of about three hundred and fifty-three million dollars in order to finance two thousand seven hundred permanent supportive housing units. And it is incredibly expensive to build affordable housing and even more so to build supportive units, which are designed with wraparound services to serve formerly homeless in order to keep them housed and it help them to progress in their stability. The trust looks to fund these projects by applying for grants and also working with state and federal elected representatives to receive budget allocations. And it is always easier to get this kind of money as as a large group as opposed to an individual. The county certainly could have gone out alone and and tried to go after these resources on their own, but we are absolutely stronger together when it comes to to grants and budget allocation. This increases the likelihood of achieving funding goals for these units. And of course, the ultimate goal is to get those experiencing homelessness off of the streets. It benefits everybody. The next slide. The model of the trust is is fairly simple. And it's not easy, but but it is simple. The the trust has a very small staff. There is a nine-member board that includes two county supervisors, the Orange County Sheriff, the Orange County Treasurer Tax Collector, and elected officials from Dana Point, Mission Viejo, Anaheim, Santa Ana, and Fullerton at this time. The trust, the trust staff seeks funding as discussed, grants and budget. And then once it obtains that funding, it issues a notice of funding availability called a NOFA or referred to as a NOFA, which developers apply for to receive funding for their affordable projects, and it is a competitive process. Each year, their strategic plan of the trust is evaluated and updated to make sure that activities are aligned with the goals and the marketplace as well. Next slide. So far, it has been a successful model with thirty-six million dollars in funding that has been or will be deployed into housing projects throughout the county. The next slide. So what this means for Seal Beach, this this is about finding solutions for the community. It's about advocating for solutions as a county to present a unified front, to show grant funders and legislators that Orange County is in this together, that we want to solve homelessness, and we want all of our community members to be treated with dignity. Yes, housing is only a piece of the puzzle, but it is an important one. In addition, as a member, a developer that might seek to build affordable units in Seal Beach could apply to funding through the NOFA process. If built, those units would count toward our regional housing needs allocation, our RENA number. As you know, we have one thousand two hundred and forty-three units assigned to us, but you may not recall that four hundred and fifty-nine of those are to be at low and very low income ranges. The trust also takes on monitoring of the units, which is the annual compliance work to make sure, once they're built, the developer or project owner is running that project according to very lengthy covenants and agreements that are put into place at the time of the financing. As a member, Seal Beach does not need to contribute capital for projects, but we would be responsible for funding a portion of administrative costs. This current fiscal year that we're finishing up, as as well as the upcoming fiscal year, do not require members to contribute to the admin costs because they have been grant funded. And Mr. Eliasen related to you last time that the trust intends to keep searching for those funds as well to to keep costs of administration down. However, if there were a need for funds, Seal Beach as a member would be contributing to what is essentially a, would be contributing essentially a pro rata share. We fall under the small city category, where costs are likely to be at or less seven thousand dollars for the year based on current projections. And of course, the more cities that join, the costs are defrayed amongst that group. And with that, staff is recommending the city join the trust, and I'm available for questions. And I believe Mr. Eliasen is is here as well for questions.
Thank you. Um, any council questions? Okay, we don't have any questions then. If not, then we'll ask for a uh motion and a second to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sastarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item O, the COVID nineteen event summary and after-action report. And we'll have Chief Gonchark present this item.
Great, thank you, Mayor. As you're all aware, the past few years have been extremely life-changing and just as challenging to all of us in our professions of public service. Because of this, uh in the public safety industry, particularly in police departments and fire departments and even in marine safety departments, our practice is to conduct after-action reports, or what are called AARs for short. They always have something uh to give us when we relate back to whenever faced with similar circumstances or just similar emergencies. So with that, about a year ago, I tasked Sergeant Brian Gray and Lieutenant Julia Klasby with this endeavor, and they're both on the call to nominate to present their product. Lastly, please know how proud I am of both Lieutenant Klasby and Sergeant Gray for their work that not only went into this, but the work that will continue to be put into this for the indefinite future. With that, Lieutenant Klasby, you are up.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Manager and Staff. My name is Lieutenant Julia Klasby. I'm the Support Services Bureau Lieutenant for the Seal Beach Police Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present our COVID nineteen event summary and after-action report. Um, like the chief said, the purpose of an after-action report is to analyze the management or response to an incident uh or event by identifying strengths to be maintained. or event by identifying strengths to be maintained and built upon, as well as identifying potential areas of improvement. After-action reports are intended to be used as a tool by the Seal Beach Police Department to provide analysis for lessons learned, best practices, and recommendations for future planning, training, and exercise development. As improvement actions are identified and addressed, it's important that relevant plans, policies, procedures are updated accordingly. The COVID nineteen event summary and after-action report details the Seal Beach Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, response to COVID nineteen from January two thousand twenty through February two thousand twenty-two. The report encompasses response actions by the Orange County Healthcare Agency, Los Alamos Unified School District, skilled nursing facilities, as well as a summary of the city and police department events and response. The the novel coronavirus that caused COVID nineteen was first reported in China in December two thousand nineteen. In response to this global public health threat, emergency proclamations were made by the state of California and Orange County. The city of Seal Beach proclaimed a local emergency March thirteenth, two thousand twenty, to provide for the health and safety of employees and citizens to protect critical infrastructure and to support response operations. After over two years of supporting response and recovery operations, our EOC continues to be activated at a minimal level as of June two thousand twenty-two, and both federal and state proclamations remain in effect. As a matter of fact, just last Thursday, we once again were posting to web EOC at the county level related to the new COVID issues we've we've faced as a community this last week. The EOC activation for the pandemic was unique for many reasons. The extended response time and support by all city departments, activities and requests that came in waves. The Orange County Healthcare Agency provided direction and control rather than public safety or emergency management agencies. The global impact to businesses, schools, healthcare, and transportation influenced the availability of resources and personnel. The extensive number of financial resources available for response and recovery. Can you go back to the last slide? Thank you. So as of today, June thirteenth, you can see on the slide there that there's over nine million cases in the state of California, over five hundred and eighty thousand cases in Orange County, and over thirty-one hundred cases in the city of Seal Beach. According to the uh, sorry, according to the CDC influenza division, there have been four pandemics in the last hundred years before COVID nineteen, occurring in nineteen eighteen, nineteen fifty-seven, nineteen sixty-eight, and two thousand nine. COVID nineteen pandemic has been unprecedented in many ways, including the number of deaths worldwide. And the response actions taken by the city of Seal Beach and Seal Beach Police Department were constantly evolving and expanding to address new and different changes. Our event summary and after-action report provide a foundation and outline for response to the next pandemic, so the city of Seal Beach can be more prepared to confront any emergency. Next slide, please. Most questions at this point can be answered at the OC COVID website listed on this slide. I'm sorry, you can move to the next slide, sorry. Uh, one option available is the quarantine and isolation calculator, which will advise how long to either quarantine or isolate based on the last time that someone was in contact with someone who has tested positive or who has had a positive test. The timing of this presentation is interesting, considering we're virtual tonight and due to possible COVID outbreak in the community. We continue to monitor and address the situation as it unfolds. We're operating at full capacity as a city, as a police department, but with an abundance of caution. Please check the city website and our social media for real-time updates as things progress. One thing I will note, the pre, one of the previous slides had provided the case counts for our city and the county and the state. Going forward, we will no longer be reporting case counts to the city website, and they are still available and updated daily on the Orange County website. I thank you for your attention, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant Klasby. That is all we, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from council?
Mayor, I did I did have a quick question. Um, on her chart, and I was, this is quite an extensive listing of material, whoever put this together, it was quite a job. And I don't remember if the numbers were the same, but on on the chart that Lieutenant Klasby just showed, fifty-two deaths at Seal Beach Health and Rehabilitation Center and seventy-one deaths in Seal Beach. Are those, are the deaths at the rehab center in addition to the seventy-one? And are those deaths, it seems like there were more there. So are those deaths that just Seal Beach residents that died at the rehab center?
I will defer to Brian, to Sergeant Brian Gray.
Okay.
Um, oh, he's telling me via text. So it's the fifty-two deaths at the nursing facility, combined with the seventy-one for the city of Seal Beach, would be our total on the city website.
You do have them together. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, hearing none. This is a receive and file item, so there's no action necessary. Which brings us to adjournment. I'm gonna now adjourn the city council to Monday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at five thirty P M, to meet and close section if deemed necessary. Thank you all for attending and paying attention. And we will see you on the twenty-seventh. Thank you.
Good night.